Andy French. He was here. There'll be questions from other people, so.
That's kind of a loaded, I don't know, man. See, that's the thing. My wife is not an outdoorsy type, so I'm worried about what she would pack.
Five-star dinner every night.
And formal, go ahead and get started. So I will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We can start our meeting with a moment of silence, please. And if we can stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a reminder, make sure that your microphones are on. Those that are in the gallery, make sure that your phones are either on silent or off. And council members, just make sure that your cellphones are put away. So if you could, if you could take roll call for us, please. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Lee.
Present.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler. Davis.
Present.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Speng. Here. So we, can I have a motion to approve of our agenda? We did have an addition as part of our consult calendars. I hope everybody has that information in front of them. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
And so with Councilman French's suggestion, so we can go ahead and do a voice vote on this, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So we'll start off this evening with a couple of presentations. Our first is the presentation by our auditor's manager, Postersian.
Amy Castner.
There you go. So I will go ahead and turn the floor over to you.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody. My name's Tyler Baker. I'm the manager on the City of Albion audit. We should have three documents for you in front of you. You should have the bound report, a stapled letter, and then this is what we'll be going over today, which are basically the highlights from the audit report. And if at any point you guys have any questions, please feel free to raise your hand, and I can answer them at that point. First of all, Tom is not here, but I want to thank Tom, Haley, and their team for all of their effort. This year, they were prepared for us, they were always available for us, which is always nice on the auditor's side. Not everybody is always available, so we do greatly appreciate that. So we're going to go through this handout. At any point, feel free to ask any questions. First page is the agenda. We'll talk about the auditor's report. We'll go through the statement of net position, some pension information. We'll go through the balance sheet and the income statement of the general fund, and then we'll go over some five-year trend graphs as well. One thing new this year in the bound financials that you note, last year there was a single audit. If you have more than $750,000 worth of federal expenditures, you're required to have this separate compliance audit. This year, because a lot of those funding last year was one-time grants, this year you were not subject, you were not over the 750, so you did not have that separate uniform guidance or single audit. With the ARPA funding, with it being subject to uniform guidance, in future years, we might have another single audit, and we will bring it up at that point. But this year, if you compare last year's report to this year's report, you will note that that is different. Next page, the auditor's report. So the purpose of an audit overall is to give our opinion as to the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. This is not to detect fraud or provide an opinion on your internal controls, and so on the report, it looks a little bit different. They put the opinion on page one now, and it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects." That's as good of an opinion as auditors can give. It's called a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is exactly what I know the board likes to see, what Treasury likes to see, what your citizens like to see, so that's great news. Further down in the audit report, it talks about the responsibilities of management and the auditor's responsibilities. And while one changes, they put that opinion right up front so everybody gets to see it. And like I said, the best opinion that we can give as auditors is what the city obtained this year. The next page is what's known as the statement of net position. So this is snapshot time as of 12/31/21. This is on the full accrual level, so this includes capital assets, long-term debt, net pension liabilities, and OPEB liability. I want to bring your attention to the first highlighted, about a quarter of the way down, the net pension asset. In the prior year, that was 9.3 million. That increased to $12.1 million this year, or a $2.8 million increase in the net pension assets. Overall, total assets were just under $35 million this year, and that is up from $30.1 million mainly due to that increase in the net pension asset. If we go down about three quarters, you see non-current liabilities highlighted, net OPEB liability. Prior year was 264,000, down to 145,000 this year. And then the net pension liability, because you guys have two different pension systems, was $1.2 million last year, this year, 840,000. In those different pension plans and OPEB, in a couple of subsequent slides, we'll go into more detail showing the funding percentages and everything. Total liabilities were $3.3 million, which is very, very consistent with the previous year. At the bottom, you see total net position of just $29.7 million. Last year, that was $26.3 million with an increase of $3.3 million mainly due to, again, that net pension asset increase. If we flip to the second page, or the next page, excuse me, this is where there's a little bit more detail in regards to the pension and the OPEB liability. So that further left column, this is the MERS plan, so this is a year behind because they have one large actuary evaluation for the entire plan, and so this is as of 12/31 of 2020. Towards the bottom, you see the employer's net position liability or asset is a liability of $1.5 million with a planned funded percentage of 90%, up from 87 in the prior year. The next page is the public safety retirement system. This is as of your fiscal year end, which is 12/31/21. Towards the bottom of the page, left column, you'll know the city's net position asset is an asset of $12.1 million, which is an increase of $2.8 million from the prior year with 180% funded percentage. The third page is OPEB for the city. Again, this is as of 12/31/21. Further left column, you see net OPEB liability of 145,000. That's a decrease from the prior year of 120,000, which is good news, with a funded percentage of 21%. The next page, we get into the general fund, which is on a modified accrual basis, so there's no long-term debt or no long-term fixed assets in regards to governmental funds. You'll notice towards the bottom, I have the assigned and unassigned fund balances highlighted. That is a total of just under $1.7 million available for future expenditures, which is approximately 37% of operating expenditures. Last year was 30%. Per Treasury, they did an average from 2017 to 2020, and for cities, in total, the mean was 49% funded, and the median was 41%. So you guys are right around that average funding for the state. The next page is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance specifically for the general fund. Total revenue this year is just under $4.8 million, which is up 231,000, or 4.8% from the prior year, mainly due to increase in taxes, tax revenue. The expenditures were about halfway down that page, $4.6 million this year, which is up 180,000, or 3.9% from the prior year. The bottom of the page, you can see that net change in fund balance are basically the result of the general fund this year, with an increase of 197,000, taking the fund balance from $1.57 to $1.77 million as of 12/31/21. Here in the next couple pages is a nice five-year comparison of revenues and expenditures, and then a breakout of the types of revenues and expenditures as well. You'll note in 2018, 2020, and 21, three out of the five years had revenues that exceeded expenditures, and then the slight but quite consistent fund balance there with the dotted lines showing the five-year trend of revenues, expenses, and fund balance. The next page is a pie graph form showing the percentages of revenues and expenditures in regards to specifically the general fund. And it starts in the bottom left of that 23%, the purple number, and works its way around, property taxes down to other financing sources. Overall, pretty consistent between all of the different revenue streams. Income taxes increased from 20% to 26% as a percentage of total expenditures, and then the intergovernmentals, mainly due to those one-time grants received last year, decreased from 35% to 31%, which is that light blue section. The bottom graph is general fund expenditures, and it starts with general government in the purple on the left side, and around, overall, all of these percentages with the prior year are right around 1% consistent with the prior year. The next page is a similar type of information, taking the general fund revenue and the general fund expenditures, but showing basically the percentage trend of the dollar amounts for revenues and expenditures. I'm not going to point to too much here, but I think is a good idea and a good visual of kind of where those revenues are either decreasing or increasing in regards to property taxes, income taxes, and intergovernmentals, which can fluctuate whether it's a one-time or a reoccurring grant, obviously. I mentioned before, but obviously there's a change in the reporting of the bound report, as in there's no single audit this year. Last year, there were some findings in regards to the audit. This year, I'm happy to announce those findings were resolved. We didn't have any such material weakness, significant deficiencies, or immaterial instances of non-compliance. Because it's not subject to uniform guidance or a single audit, we don't have to show the prior year findings and whether it's been resolved. So that good news isn't in the bound report, but I just wanted to verbalize that good news, the hard work that Haley and Tom and their team have done resolving those prior year findings. That's all I have. Is there any questions? I'd be glad to answer them or do my best.
Do we have any questions for Tyler?
I do.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mary. So overall, financial health of the City of Albion, what would you say our overall health is?
So overall, and I think that fund balance pointed to it, I think was 37%, which is slightly up from last year. Included in that is some ARPA funding that has not been spent this year. So if in the balance sheet of the general fund, there's unearned revenue, 400, a little over 400,000 of that unearned revenue is your first receipt of ARPA during '21, which has not been spent yet, and so once it has been determined by the city on how to spend that money, that will then be recognized. And I think overall, like we talked about, whether you use the mean or the median for the overall statewide, again, that's statewide, right? So that's a large range in sizes of cities, and if you look at that percentage, there was one that was, don't quote me, 15, 20% underfunded, and then there was one that was like 190% funded, right? So there's a big variety, so it depends on what numbers you want to pull the data from, so that's why I provided the mean and the median. And overall, you guys are consistent with that median of that 41% or 47 or 49, the mean was. You guys are just under it, but overall, healthy in regards to that range of those percentages.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to know, do you see red flags that we should be aware of?
So part of our requirements is if we note anything in regards to policies, procedures, internal controls, if we suspect or know of any fraudulent activity, we're not required to test fraud, but we are required to gain an understanding of internal controls, and if anything comes up, we're required to communicate that with governance. Like I said, we don't have a separate management letter, so nothing in regards to controls is good thing. So in that regard, like with a lot of professional employers, no news is kind of good news, and from that stance, you'll have a letter also that I didn't go over because it's boilerplate, but that stapled letter is our communication to governance, which talks about if we had any issues with management, any disagreements, any findings, it's required to be reported in there. All boilerplate, all saying we didn't have any disagreements with management, which is all good news in regards to my communication to the board.
No, I wasn't speaking of that in terms of in the future, you know, should we be very mindful in terms of maintaining what we, the level in which we.
The one thing that comes, the one thing that comes to mind is on the pension and OPEB, both pension plans and OPEB, very well-funded overall, and I think a lot of municipalities weren't that, didn't have that foresight previously, and so they're in significant issues because they're trying to fund operations as well as prepare on that liability because they retired, right? And they want to pay it. And so because of that, you're able to make decisions not having to be hamstrung by those pensions because you guys are so well-funded and you had that foresight early, which is one thing that I've seen a lot in municipalities.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thanks for having me.
For getting the information, yeah.
Thank you, Tyler.
Next up, we have Krista Trout here from our Calhoun County Land Bank.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
May not work, you just have to, you may just tell us to advance.
I don't know, I don't have my glasses on.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Yes, it is. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Krista Trout Edwards. I am the director of the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority. I am deviating a little bit from my title, the presentation on the agenda, and I'm doing, I am covering environmental stuff, but I'm just doing a biannual recap of 2020 and 2021 because I hadn't been here in such a long time, and there are many new faces on the council. I just wanted to provide some background and context for everyone. So I'm going to go over a couple of different items, and you have, I believe, before you a written report as well as the PowerPoint, which will all be put into a lovely biannual report very soon, and we'll make sure that you all have copies of that. So the first thing we wanted to share was just our accomplishments, which all, of course, occurred during COVID. One of the things that we're most known for is blight elimination, and we've seen sort of a turn from blight elimination to some other activities. So both in 2020 and 2021, we only did 10 demolitions each year. All of those were grant-funded or ARPA-funded. The most significant one was the Union Steel structure here in the City of Albion, which I'll talk about a little bit more, but that was a huge partnership demolition, and it wouldn't have occurred if we didn't have the City of Albion support or the county commissioner's support. We also did 12 transformations, and those are through our programs like Transform This Home, Transform This Commercial Property, and Develop This Lot. We did 12 of those in 2020 and 10, I'm sorry, 15 in 2021. We also mow a lot of properties. We have just under 800 properties in our inventory, so we've mowed 765 in 2020 and 684 in 2021, and that difference is just properties that we were able to transfer out and get them back on the tax roll between those two years. And then we have numbers for other properties sold, and you'll see we have side lots on there. Side lots are when we sell properties to the adjacent property owner, and those are residential properties, so. And then if we have other sales, those are ones that fall outside of our programs, and they may be lots that don't qualify as side lots because they're too large and they might be unbuiltable, so we sell them as direct sales. And this is just a little bit about our inventory. 87% of our inventory is either in the City of Battle Creek or the City of Albion. And then we do have sites all throughout the county and the townships, but primarily our sites are located in Battle Creek and Albion. We have 579 properties in Battle Creek and 117 in the City of Albion. Most of our lots now are vacant residential properties, that's 722, but we also own commercial vacant properties as well as industrial vacant properties, and most of our industrial sites are in the City of Albion, and that would include Harvard Industry, Union Steel, and then some other post-industrial sites here, and that just lends to Albion's history as an industrial city. And then I just wanted to share a little bit about where our funding comes from. Statutorily, our funding comes from what's called the 550 specific tax. Once we sell a property, we collect 50% of the taxes for five years, and it's transparent. It just happens at the assessor's office, and it doesn't affect the property owner, but that is not a sustaining funding source for us. So we also receive funding through property sales, agreements with the county treasurer, because most of our properties come at the end of the tax foreclosure process. The county treasurer holds tax auctions, and if they don't sell, they come to us, so that's how we get them by default primarily. And then we get a lot of grant funding, and you can see here between 2020 and 2021, there's a significant difference in grant funding, and that's ARPA dollars. We were awarded ARPA financing from the Board of County Commissioners to do some of the work we're going to talk about here this evening. And so I also included in this presentation how we spent that money. You'll see in 2020, demolitions takes up a big chunk of that pie, and that's Union Steel. That was almost a half a million dollar demolition, so it was a very expensive project, and that's why that piece of that pie is so big in 2020. But also, we have costs, just property expenses, like mowing, boarding and securing, cleanup. Those happen all the time, and we have administration costs, and then environmental is in that pie, and that's an EPA grant that we're going to talk about this evening, and rehabilitation. And then you see in 2021, it switches, right? Demolition's not so big because we didn't do a big project like that, we scaled it back. So what about environmental? So our organization was the recipient of an EPA brown bill assessment grant, and that means that we go out and we assess the property for any contamination, and we can help folks who want to do a development project get liability protection, but we can't remediate any contamination found on site. So we are in a coalition with the City of Albion and the City of Battle Creek in that grant, so we're coalition partners. And it's a $600,000 grant from the EPA, and we've had our first one closed in 2021, and that's the data you see up on the screen. So we did nine projects in Battle Creek, 13 in Albion, and 13 across the county, and with that $600,000, we were able to leverage 12 million for cleanup activities, redevelopment, and demolition work. So we created 78 temporary jobs, 29 permanent jobs, and we anticipate that we will be creating 111 jobs once the development projects that are in progress right now are finished. So we were able to do a lot with that $600,000. And we are actually in our second EPA grant right now with the same coalition partners, and we expect to apply for a third grant this fall. But we've used that funding different ways and for different types of projects. This is one in the City of Battle Creek. It's the Record Box, and it was a restoration project, Handmap Brewery Company, and there is an event facility, but it also has a brewing company in it. And so it's just a type of project to share with you that shows what can happen in a downtown building. And so this one was completed, and they did the assessment work, but then they also received historic tax credits, which I believe you're familiar with from some of the projects that have happened in downtown Albion, and different funding sources. This one, I think, is really cool. This is in the Village of Athens. They wanted to purchase this property, but they wanted to turn it into a community center, so we helped them with the assessment. They purchased the property, they had grant funding from the Battle Creek Community Foundation, and they were able to rehabilitate this historic house and turn it into a community center. So those are a couple of different types of projects that happened. One of the things the Land Bank has done with the EPA funding is find out about its projects, or find out about its properties, because we tend to get our projects and properties by default, and we don't know that much about them. So with Union Steel, we wanted to do that, to do that assessment, to see how we could take it down safely and get that baseline data to create a demo plan, because we knew it was going to be an expensive demolition, but we wanted to answer the questions about how to take it down safely before we put it out to bid so we could get a better, a better price. Because we've taken down a lot of big structures, and we knew that the more information we had, the better answers and bids we would get back from demolition contractors. So we used the EPA grant in a couple of ways for this particular project. Number one, we did a pre-demolition assessment of the site, and we put that out, and we created a demolition plan so that we could include it with our RFQ. And then after demolition, we went out and collected additional data to find out kind of where the site stood, and now we're at the point where we need a developer who tells us how they want to develop the site before we can do more at it. So we just met last week with the city and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, about this area being a priority site. So our Union Steel is the little square in the middle, and then the big site to the right is the dog park, and then the two starred sites, the one in the lower corner is owned by the Land Bank, and that was once a plating, a plating facility, and then the other one, I don't know the history on, I just know it was owned by the city. So once we get the basic information, we can start to move forward, but without that baseline information that we got from the EPA assessment grant, you know, we really didn't have anything on these sites. So we used that EPA assessment grant not only on the Land Bank's Union Steel site, but we also did some assessments on the city site, so we can start moving these things along, but we really needed that grant to help us gather that basic information. So another site that we used that grant on was 131 North Superior Street, which is, we call it the tattoo building at our, at our office, I almost said our house, but at our office. And the Land Bank owns the tattoo place, the commercial next door, and the upstairs around Dickerson's. And I have been working on these structures almost as long as I've been at the Land Bank Authority, because they were all owned separately, and we were trying to get them back together, and we've had them out for development, but what has turned out is the. and we've had them out for development, but what has turned out is the tattoo business has a dirt floor and it has some contamination in it and that's what the basement looks like. So it has some contamination in it and we need to dig it out. And as I said, our EPA grant can identify what's going on, but it can't remediate it. So we received a grant from the state land bank authority slash the state treasury to remove the soil in the basement, but because of the pricing of everything right now, it was very high and it was, it was too, or the bid was too much. We didn't have enough funding to cover it. So what we're doing is we're going back in with the ARPA dollars that we got from the county to fill the gap and we're doing that work this summer because we know we couldn't, we can't rehabilitate the building until we get the soil out. So it's taken us about a year to put together a plan to get the dirt out and to figure out how to do it because, I mean, you gotta do it all by hand and you also have to stabilize the foundation walls and it's just not digging the dirt out, it's all of these other things. But it's the EPA grant that allowed us to get the data and the information and then through all of this additional work to figure out how to actually remove the soil. So that's going to be happening real soon here in August and we pieced together the funding to make it, the rest of it happen too. So the other thing that happened during COVID that we were really excited about is one of our signature programs, which is called Transform This Home, reached 50 projects. Now the one up on the top there is our first Transform This Home, the big two-story blue one, and that's in the city of Albion. It's on North Superior Street. And so what we do with this, this program is we sell houses and the owner creates a rehab plan and they have a certain time to do that rehab plan. Now often we'll go in and try to do some repairs to make it more affordable and also to make that project be successful. So for instance, on that one, we put a roof on it because it had a roof, it had a hole in the roof, so we made about $3,000 on it at the time of sale, so we, you know, we try to price them to be realistic about what's going on in the house. The average rehab cost based on exit surveys is around 22,000, although this program is really flexible and allows folks who have the skills or other, or friends with skills to do some of the work themselves and so they're able to bring that cost down if they're able to do some of that work themselves. Based on exit surveys, the total rehab and acquisition for all of the houses in the program is just over a million dollars. The average sale price of the homes for, in Transform This Home is just under 10,000 and over the life of the program, the average, or the total gross sales is $480,000. And this just shows that we've had 14% of those in the city of Albion, 72% in the city of Battle Creek, which makes sense based on the property split between the two communities and then we've had some in our townships as well. And most people do these through an approach of do it yourself in contractors. If you're not living in the home, you really need those contractors to do your mechanical systems and your plumbing and all of that, so that makes sense. And this, this map here shows the Transform This Home projects in the city of Albion. Now some of these have gotten interrupted during the pandemic, so they're on a longer timeframe and Amy Rose in my office is working with these owners to get them back on track. Now this right here, I just wanted to take a moment and show you why it's so important to get these properties either rehabbed or to think about how we're using vacant lots. You know, we do meet with city administration, I think it's once a month, and then we meet with EDC quarterly and talk about kind of what's going on with our properties and strategize around them. Now this is actually a map from the Washington Heights neighborhood in the city of Battle Creek and the reason I have it in this presentation is it shows in yellow sites that we demolished. The one yellow site with a circle around it is a potential side lot because there's a driveway issue. And then it shows the two orange sites that are Transform This Home projects. The city of Battle Creek has a neighborhood intel system that you can go in and see how work on a property impacts neighboring property values. Okay, so it can show you if you were going to build on one of these sites, how would it affect the neighboring property value or if you're doing a Transform This Home project, how does it affect the neighboring property value? Which I think is really cool because, you know, if we're going to make a decision about a property that may have potential to be infill housing or may have potential to be a side lot, you know, what does that do to surrounding property values? And so I put together this table for you, if my face is over part of it, but that's okay because you have it in your handout. So the Transform This Homes are 107 and 111 Greenwood, they're right by each other. So that neighborhood intel system gives me the predictive rehab impact and it also tells me that there are 103 houses within the 500-foot radius. So you divide that number by 103 and it tells me that the impact on those per house is, you know, 400 or $4,588. And so, you know, you kind of take that out, you add them together, so because they're right next to each other, they have the same number of houses within that, that 500-foot radius and you get $9,000 between those two projects on the five, on the 103 houses within the 500 feet. So then you look at the houses that we demolished and you say, well, what if we were to build on those, how would that impact it? And then you're really starting to talk about adding value back into a neighborhood when you're really looking at the housing issues that many of our communities are having and how do we do that? And of course, the cities are looking at buying our lot at 307 CAS, we have a purchase agreement for that and we've been talking a lot about, you know, which lots does it make sense to do infill on and how would that affect things? And so I just wanted to bring that up here in the middle of this because, you know, we are having those conversations and we are thinking strategically about how properties can be used and how they can impact positively the community. And this is a map of some of our properties in the city. This is the northwest section, precinct one, so this is North Albion Street and that big cluster of orange there are all vacant lots. And so I just was sharing this with you to show that we've been doing some of this work in the city as well. There's a lot of colors on this map, so I didn't want to put the whole thing in here, but just to let you know that we're thinking about this type of thing here in the city of Albion too. And we don't have the exact same tools, but we can use the tools in the city of Battle Creek to at least inform decisions about how we use properties in Albion. And now I just wanted to share some overall projects. So we had our first veterans build with Habitat for Humanity completed during the pandemic in the city of Albion, so that was a huge thing for Habitat to come over here. I know they were talking about it pre-pandemic and it was something folks were really wanting to happen. So this was a land bank property that was sold to Habitat specifically for this veterans' build and this was completed last year. Another one of the projects that happened was we did sell this property to the Tasty Wagon, underdeveloped this lot. I know there were some, some bumps with it, but I wanted to include it because it was done underdeveloped this lot and any property that we sell has to meet the zoning requirements of the city. And we did get zoning approval for it and that's what we required, so we did, we did sell it because it did meet that, that requirement. And one of the things that we wanted to do with our properties and going forward is, you know, there are many ways in which properties can be used and helping someone start a business and having the parameters necessary for someone to start a business makes sense. So, you know, we hope that we can do that in the future and we want to make sure that we have the right things to help folks do that. And so if there's something that needs to happen differently, you know, we want to talk about that. Some of the other projects that we did here, this is just outside the city of Albion, this is 1615 Michigan Avenue East. This was an old hotel and this is in Sheridan Township. What they required was a conditional rezone, they required building and architectural plans, a municipal approval. So that was a different process that that municipality required the buyer to go through and we helped that buyer get through all of those processes because, again, our policies require that zoning approval before we can sell. And then this is one in, in Battle Creek and this was another Transform This Commercial Property. The city also required conditional rezoning, building and architectural plans, a municipal approval. And this one, we also used that environmental grant to make sure the buyer got liability protection. So it's kind of a layering, looking at our properties and trying to find out, you know, what do they need, what does the municipality need? And we try and work really closely to make sure that we get things correct and right and are doing it in a way that sets people up for success. And that's it for tonight.
Do you have any questions for Krista?
Yes, I got a ton of questions.
Hopefully I have a ton to answer.
Okay, so speaking of the, the software that the city of Battle Creek is currently using, it's funny because me and the city manager was just talking about that same software earlier today and the fact that we need it down here with all the vacant lots that we have and we'll be able to utilize it to, so how familiar with it are you?
Pretty familiar.
Okay. Can it be used to prevent the effects of gentrification in neighborhoods? Not the racial component, but the displacement component?
I guess it depends on how you think that that happens. I mean, you can use it to track data, you can use it to track, so what the city uses it for is to track foreclosures, potential foreclosures, vacancy, and so I think it would depend on what you think might happen with displacement. So one of the things that we're concerned about is, you know, we have been working on housing on our properties, but we're really concerned about it being attainable.
Right.
And that means affordable for folks who live here now and how can we make sure that folks have the opportunity to purchase? I hadn't thought about the software in that way, but that's a question that you could send on to...
I spoke with Chris.
Lucie?
Yeah. Yeah, we met Thursday.
Okay.
Friday afternoon.
Okay. And what, yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, we went through, we went through it, but just to know what the impact of putting a property, putting a home on a vacant property and the value that it could bring to the surrounding homes, but then homes, once you start to look at the larger community.
Change the value.
Right, and you know that before putting the shovel to the dirt, right? So I definitely see a value in there, but we need to talk about that so we can figure out how we can work it, work it out to get it here in the city. Or do you guys utilize that same software?
We use the city's software.
Okay. At the county though, do you use it?
No, no. Now, the county treasurer was working on something.
Okay.
And I was kind of on the edge of that conversation and I don't know where it ended up, but I could follow up with him and find out. I use the city of Battle Creek's software because they're the ones who have it.
Right, right. Okay.
I would love for Albion to have that kind of software.
Right. Now, the 117 properties that you guys have, I visit you guys' website often, someone actually was asking me the other day if there was a listing of foreclosures because they wanted to purchase and redevelop a property. And we went to the website, there was only like two that we were able to access, I believe. So the 117, they have to stop by the office in order to get...
So we have just listed, or we are in the process of listing several from the city of Albion and that would be with Amy Rose in our office, she's on vacation this week. We don't list them all because some of them have issues, like they're environmentally contaminated.
Right.
And they're going through that process.
Okay.
Some of them have liens and that means that we did a demolition, so there's a lien that would have to be paid off with the state.
Gotcha.
So they're in that group of properties.
Right.
Foreclosed properties would be with the county treasurer's office and they would be going up for auction and I can't remember the date of their auction, but that's in August, so that's a different group of properties.
Got you.
Now, I know Amy was listing ours, so I can check, I believe that happened, so it might be a disconnect between getting listed and getting turned on on our website so I can find out.
Yeah, he wasn't just, he wasn't, actually he wasn't looking for the city of Albion, he was looking for the Battle Creek area. But like I said, we got on the site, there's a few properties that you can click on, but not a listing.
Yeah, so we don't put them all out there because they're in different.
Right.
And so like one of our biggest neighborhoods in the city of Battle Creek currently is on pause because we're doing, we have an advisory committee set up in that neighborhood and we're doing a land reuse plan and I didn't put it in here because it was kind of off topic.
Right.
And we just had our third meeting with that advisory committee and what we're really doing is a land reuse plan about how they want those sites to be reused and really highlighting their info.
Okay.
You know, because we do have, like currently, we, for the first time ever, we have some funding to help with title work and we have some funding to help with site clearance, which is really important because our sites come with some hurdles and we haven't been able to help buyers with those types of hurdles in the past. So we were able to take some of the lessons learned and some of our desire to help with some of those equity components and talk with the county commissioners about it and they gave us some funding through ARPA to help with that. But our project going on in the Washington Heights community in Battle Creek, we have funding through WK Kellogg Foundation and they also funded some of that. So, so we have like properties in various, various streams, I guess would be the best way to say it.
I got you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You have other questions?
I do, but I'll be in contact with you.
I'm always available on the top, so, yeah, we can make an appointment and go through some of that.
Perfect.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Krista?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. If anybody is in the gallery that would like to scan an address to the council in regards to an agenda item, just please state your name, address, and three minutes of All right, seeing none, we will move on. Council, in your packet, you have the items under the consent calendar. Those would be your July 5th study session minutes, July 5th regular session minutes, and July 11th study session. Oh, and then also the permit that is being asked for by Walk the Beat for September 16th and 17th and October 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And can we get a voice vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, we will move on. In our packets, we have the application to appoint Vivian Davis to equity ask for. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Do we have any questions or comments for Miss Davis?
Oh, do I have, oh.
Do we have questions or comments for Miss Davis?
Trying to see.
All right, in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Great work to be done.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve a second reading, the action of ordinance 2022-06?
So moved.
Support.
City Attorney Hartness?
So councilor calls, this is an amendment to our existing disturbing disordinance. Basically what it does is it modifies our ordinance to essentially mirror the jury instruction that the Michigan Supreme Court just came out with at the tail end of last year. And, and so it effectively brings us in line with state law as it relates to this ordinance. So happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for our attorney? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Steiner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is our discussion to designate the acting city manager, Mayor Portem Jackson.
As it was brought up in our study session, I did have some concerns because I understand that it was going... because, um, understand that it was going to be Yvonne and then the next individual that was Chief Kip. And, as was stated, that the concern was, I know there's a lot going on and, um, it seems like we shouldn't want to take him from, um, what he does so very well, even though we know he has, um, put it, he has stepped in this shoes before, he has been in this place before. And he might have other individuals, um, out there that can represent him. But I just believe that, um, we should look at this a little further. Um, I think we should, uh... And I just think we should look into this a little deeper. I have concerns about taking him from what is going on right now out there. There's a lot going on.
I second, um, Mayor Protem Jackson's concerns as well. Um, there's a lot going on in the city right now, and I would hate to shorten the police force, um, in any way during this time. So, I definitely second her concerns.
Councilmember French?
Um, having been on the council from 2010 to 2018, I believe Scott Kip, uh, ably served our community as, uh, acting city manager at least three times as we've transitioned between city managers, um, and other times as well. So, um, while I understand that, uh, we keep getting reports of what's going on in the city uh, from the police every week or month, um, I'm fully confident that Scott will be able to manage his time and the time of his staff uh, so that he can faithfully and competently and expertly, uh, manage our city during our city manager's absence.
And like I said, in our, um, study session, you know, I know Chief Kip has stepped in before, probably done this probably more often than not as an acting city manager. I believe that he's able to balance his responsibilities as our chief of police, our public safety, along with stepping in to assist our city manager, uh, keep things moving forward. Um, you know, he is aware of projects that are being, um, worked on. He knows the folks within our city hall so that he can get things done quickly. So, um, I don't have issues with giving him as acting.
I can just add a few comments. Um, I would fully support, um, Chief Kip to serve in my absence. Um, upon receiving the notification from Assistant Manager Ridge that she would be leaving us here on August 15th, um, she did notify all of the department heads, as well as city council, I believe it was the end of June, that she would no longer be here in the assistant manager role. At that time, we, my office, myself, including Assistant Manager Ridge, we have already started work with Chief Kip to kind of bring him in the loop on a lot of the things that have been happily, happening at the city and through our office. Um, he has served in this role several times, and obviously it's up to the decision of council on how you would like to proceed if it is, um... I know during the study session you mentioned reaching out to MML. I would just air that if we want, if you wanted to do this, I would suggest that we started that when we were notified by Assistant Manager Ridge, since this resolution was approved by council back in March, laying out the process for appointing an acting manager. Um, I'm not sure the turnaround time and how long it would take for them to, uh, appoint us with a interim or acting manager, but then I will be leaving at the end of August. It is already the middle of July, so our next regular meeting is August 1st. It does not leave very much time for myself to really bring this person up to speed on what is happening. Um, per the charter, it does lay out the option for Director Me to serve. Um, prior to bringing this resolution back in March to your, for your approval, I did have the conversations with Director Me to see if he is interested in serving in that position. He respectfully declined. Um, we will be in the prime budget season, so I know he will be very busy dealing with that, as well as he will be bringing on a new deputy, um, deputy treasurer. So they, he will be working to bring that individual up to speed to get them going in their new role. Um, obviously it's up to the will of council, and I will respectfully do whatever you guys as tasks assign me to do, but those are just my, just a little concerns that I do have.
Um, on that note as well, I, I don't feel that I am or the council is saying that, um, he's not able to do what he has done and within those, from 2010 to 2018, but there has been a lot more that has increased far as what's going on in our city from that timeframe of those eight years. And I know it's going to take a lot of, um, some of the individuals that he has, because I know he has new individuals that have come up on. They need to have a little bit more training as well. I'm quite sure he can help them in those areas, because he's been on this, uh, force for quite some time. My concern is our city as a whole due to what Kip can do and enforce out there in his area that he was, uh, basically rooted and grounded for and hired for.
And, yep, Councilmember French?
Can you call the question?
There's not, there's not a motion before council.
No.
It's just a discussion.
Yes, just a discussion. Any other comments?
Um, just getting on, has there been any kind of comparative analysis in terms of MML versus, uh, an in-house replacement?
Not at this time, but if we can reach out to, um, receive that information for you to see what it would be, I can assure you it is going to be more costly to bring someone into the MML opposed to, um, the pay that has been outlined in the resolution. Um, so I'm just looking for a direction. I would say if we are not going to appoint Chief Kip as acting manager, I would then recommend we do go to a firm, because in reality, he is, has the most staff within this department, so I believe he would be capable to step up, because he does have several other, um, members below him to continue the day-to-day operations of, um, public safety. All of my other department heads, it is either them solely running their departments or they have not as many, um, additional support within their individual departments. So I don't, all of us here, we are wearing multiple hats, where all of our plates are full. Um, so if, if it is at the will of council to not move forward with what has been outlined in Resolution 2022-08, that I, that would be my recommendation. And I'm happy to provide additional information on that process through the MML.
I'd just like to know, if whoever is appointed to be in that position, are they going to be able to make decisions to things that come up? Are they going to say, "Well, let's just wait till the city manager gets back"?
So, under both the charter and the ordinance, anybody that you appoint to the acting manager position has the exact same authority that the city manager would have. Whoever you appoint can make whatever decision the, the regularly-serving city manager would be, um, able to make.
Councilmember French?
So, on a somewhat related topic, um, with the announcement of our assistant city manager's departure, what's the timetable for finding a replacement?
That, um, as soon as she was notified, we posted her position, um, so it has been posted. Um, there is not a deadline, it is open until filled, so we are actively, um, accepting applications.
Any other questions or comments? Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the addendum for the city manager employment agreement?
So moved.
Support.
Attorney Hartness?
So, if council recalls, uh, the council previously approved an addendum that, uh, gave the city manager a one-time rollover of paid time off. Um, when, when that addendum was presented to the finance department, fine, the finance department had a, basically their own interpretation of, of what that meant in terms of sick time for the city manager. Under the city's, uh, employee manual, all city employees, um, I should say all non-union city employees accrue sick time at a, at a specified rate. Um, so what this addendum does is it just clarifies what the city manager's sick bank was at the time of the last addendum, and that she'll continue to accrue sick time in accordance with the city's, um, the, the city employee manual. And that's it. It just, and I did run this past finance, and they are fine with the modifications, and it clears up the issue that they had.
Mayor Protem Jackson?
Yes, my question was just, you said this is going on the third addendum? This is the third time we would be revising her, um, her contract, basically, her, her employment agreement? And it seems like the other, the second one that we just did, if I'm not wrong, is similar to this one. Because it was due to some hours that were allocated.
The last addendum that we did was something special requested by the manager. Her original contract only allowed her to roll over 80 hours of PTO per year. Since she was without an assistant city manager for several months, um, last year, I believe.
Majority of my first year.
Majority of last year. She requested that we specifically do a one-time rollover of, I think it was 77 extra hours of PTO in addition to the 80s. So we had to build in that modification to fulfill that request for the city manager.
In the first one, I was, under my previous positions that I filled here at the city, I was, I had administrated or admin time, um, under as city manager, I did not have that. So the first addendum was to, um, carry that to the end of last year, December of last year, and that moving forward, it would no longer be issued to me each year.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I asked the other question about, um, I guess I wanted to know, um, she, I think she kind of answered it for me when I asked about, um, this was in accordance with, with the employee's handbook. And is it something that we need to do tonight? Is everybody in an agreement of understanding what you're proposing?
I'm sorry.
Does everyone understanding what you are proposing tonight? Is it something that we need to do tonight? That's what I said.
I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody here doesn't understand what's before council. I mean, I think the city manager was looking to have this done to clarify this before she goes off on her maternity leave, but as I've indicated, all this addendum does is it clarifies for the finance department that the city manager does in fact receive sick time as, as do the other, as do the other non-union city employees. She accrues said sick time in accordance with our city employee manual. Does anybody, can I answer any questions regarding that? Nope.
So we were possibly talking about from what time to what time?
No, this is just to give her her sick time.
Just to give sick time. It doesn't have a timetable.
It's just to clarify their, um, their handbook. Make it in line with their handbook.
City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Steiner?
Yes.
Future agenda items. Any council members want to see any particular topic brought up for future meetings?
Well, since you took care of it already, I don't have it.
Now, I have... Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, a few of my constituents, uh, were concerned about the street lights in our areas.
Streetlights?
Yeah, can we, I don't know, maybe possibly do an audit or something to see if the, the streetlights are, um, adequate throughout the precincts?
Are there any particular roads that you want us to look at?
I believe it was, uh, Ford Road, um... Yeah, maybe Ford Road and then around and down through Broadwell.
Yes, and I have, um, Fitch Street, um, near Huntington. Going in that area, that was a concern.
Councilmember French?
So, um, everything old is new again. Um, when I was on council before, I hate to keep bringing that up, but we were told when people brought up light concerns that those lights are owned by somebody other than the city. Um, the power that the city has is we can go to consumers' energy and tell them specific lights. Um, and they tend to act a little more aggressively than if citizens do. So I appreciate you bringing that up because, um, but I don't know, do we have the capacity to do an audit of all streetlights? Because it will be obviously after hours when our staff are not working, when we find out that lights are out. Um, but I think public safety can, and public works can take a list of individual lights of people... And this is a call to all citizens in the city. Um, when you're out and about, uh, or looking outside your house, if there's a light that goes out, and many of the lights in our city go on, and then they go off, and they go on again, and do that throughout the evening. So if you see a light that's doing that, that's the end of its life. And, and that helps the city out, will help us communicate and give a list to consumers' energy, and that, that can be then dealt with, so...
Yep, and we do have a process in place, because all of the lights, they are owned by consumers. And I know Director Mueller, he worked with Councilmember Lawler, because there were issues within her precinct. So if you, if your residents, if you know of, there are lights that are out there, is a number on the poll, if you take that number and you can report it to our Public Services Department, they will then pass that on to consumers to have that addressed. There is an actual form on the website under the Public Services tab that you can go online and input the data there, and it comes to our office here, and we forward that on to consumers.
And I guess I would just encourage you all, when you do your communications with your constituents, whether it's through email or precinct meetings, you can ask them for feedback. That might be the fastest way to find out where the issues may lie. And that way you can assist them in getting that reported to the city.
Perfect.
Streetlights on there.
Thank you.
Any other agenda items?
She says so.
Yeah, I would just like to follow up. I, I think Krista is gone, but, um, during my, during my presentation initially, I was, I was made aware of the significant amount of lead in some of the older homes. So I wonder if there's a study, I know Calhoun County has something that was presented to the Board of Health, but where do we actually stand? Because it does impact learning, you know, disabilities. And according to their records, Albion was listed as one of the worst cities in Calhoun County with lead, uh, because of the older homes and a lot of children are living in those older homes. So I'm wondering, how can we follow up, you know, to make sure we're addressing that issue?
Yep, so we actually, Director Arnold and I, we had a, a meeting earlier today with Erin Lewis. She is an, um, Albion College student who is doing her, um, final study on lead within Albion and how to address those issues. As well as Shawna Gamble, who is the grant coordinator for the two grants that the City of Battle Creek has received to address lead issues with throughout Calhoun County. Um, 94% of our homes have built, have been built before 1974. So that means more than likely there have lead paint materials in these homes. So we are working to bring more information to our community so residents can take advantage of that grant program to, to assess the issues within their home. I know, uh, we ask for materials to push, we will be providing it through Dr. Arnold's office, as well as on the city website. Um, if you know of any issues, just contact us. We will, uh, help you at least get the application going, or direct you to speak to Shawna Gamble. She said she is accessible at all the, um, Monday through Friday. She is here to help, so she will get you going and applying and, um, direct you to the program that you qualify or will assist you with. But then there are also issues, I know you can have the exposure to lead other than paint and things like that. We are in the process of identifying all of the lead and copper water lines that go into the homes here. Um, as required for the state of Michigan, the lead and copper rules, we have to have those identified and replaced, I believe by, it's replaced by 2040. Could you say that a week here before we know it? And it does, the burden does fall on the local government to do that. So we are actively working to identify those lines within our community. But then this is news to me, I'm just tying in. Erin Lewis, she did provide this information. We're kind of working with not only the farmer's market, the, um, local food pantry and other things, to provide fresh foods. Because if you provide fresh foods to residents, that can help combat lead poisoning and lead issues as well. So we are trying to take advantage of several different programs and organizations to address the lead issues within our, our community. So please stay tuned, we will, um, provide more information on our city's website, as well as to council members to pass out to constituents, as well as Neighborhood Inc. They are here in our community a few times a week, and they would be able to further assist you as well.
Yeah, um, just to piggyback off of what the city manager was saying, uh, Neighborhoods Inc. is the, the program that's taking care of that, and the name of the program is the Lead Out Program. They're in the Cram Building. Um, so, yeah, if somebody has suspicion or small children, and they want to know if the home that they live in is contaminated, uh, reach out to the, uh, the Lead Out Program. that they live in is contaminated, reach out to the, the Lead Out Program through Neighborhoods Inc.
Okay, all right. Is there, I wonder if there's any way to get that information to parents, maybe, okay, I'll work on that.
Well, we have, we have a barrier here in the community with getting the information out, period. Currently, we're looking to address that issue, so hopefully, we can figure out a way to do it.
Yeah, and we have, I'll make sure that they're at the Harrington School.
Yep, Erin, she did say that she, there are several upcoming events that she will be attending to share this information for residents. She did mention the back to school event at Harrington with, in double ACP.
Right, 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 yes, okay, thank you.
Any other future agenda items?
Just a heads up to council, Director Arnold, he actually will, during our study session before our August first meeting, he will be coming to share the process on excess land owned, or city-owned property here and the process in getting rid of that. So, stay tuned that he will give a presentation on the proper procedure or process in, in handling that excess property.
So, that'll be a study session?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman French?
I know that there was meetings with the folks connected to dam removal, et cetera. Are we at a time where an update can be provided or conversation can be had?
Yes, so the big, we will have a citywide open house on next Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, from four to six p.m. at Victory Park under the Large Pavilion. So, we will have White Men and Associates, Eagle, DNR, city staff to attend this event. It's an open house style, so you just walk through, you can ask questions, see project samples from other communities, weigh in on what you would like to see. And then, once that has happened, we will, White Men and Associates will come to our council during one of our August meetings to provide you with a final report from that feasibility study that was conducted over the past few months and discuss possible options.
Will there be, for those who don't like to get out and about, I'm just thinking of our more senior or more distant folks, an opportunity for them to provide feedback online?
Yes, so there has been a survey, and it was released, and it's also been, it's available on the city's website, so they can log in. They, there's, it does not take you long, it's a handful of questions, just asking your experience with the Kalamazoo River, feedback, things like that. So, I can, I will resend that survey link out to everybody, but it is, it is available on the city's website.
Any other agenda items?
All right, I got a question. Okay, I don't know much about this grant personally, but there's a grant coming out to help with gutters, and I know we have a large aging, aging, aging population here in the community, and maybe we can figure out a way, a partnership or something, so that we can help to, help some of the aging homeowners with getting their gutters repaired. Maybe partner with Gary Thompson or something.
I'll follow up with you, just to kind of see, learn a little bit more about them.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other items?
I'm sorry.
All right, public comments. So, at this time, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand, please just give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours.
Hello, my name is Marion O. Grenston, retired accountant with Department of Defense. I recently moved back to Albion after retiring it, and I've bought several properties, and my residents, I've been trying to get assistance from the city. I've been here multiple times with complaints about what's going on, what I need help with. I've submitted complaints, written complaints. I've heard nothing from the city. I'm living in one of those homes downtown along a river there, and so I don't know if what Mr. French is talking about dams being cut off, if that's affecting the waterway next to my house. But, I've been doing all I can to restore that property. And I keep running to obstacle after obstacle as far as the city goes when I'm seeking assistance, okay? I don't, I don't know what to do. I found out about this meeting when I came here again today to check on, I haven't heard anything, I was told about this meeting. So, that's when I found out, I don't know your procedure or whatnot, or I would have stood up the first time you'd asked for public comments. I didn't know, I don't know your procedure. But I know that, you know, the problems that I'm having, I don't understand why no one here at City Hall has helped me, you know, I, I don't know why. Taxes are paid up, just got a new tax bill, I pay my taxes, I'm restoring the house near downtown, right next to the college properties and whatnot, to try to help the city and improve property values like they were talking about earlier. But I'm meeting obstacle after obstacle, and I'm wondering why. And the question I ask today is, who can I go to to get help or get these issues addressed? So, that's why I'm standing here right now.
Do we have your address? Do we get the address?
Three oh six East Erie Street.
So, we can follow up, you know what departments you've gone to?
I've gone to, I talked to this one guy, Patrick Miller, and he, he, I met, he was dismissive. He didn't want to hear what I had to say, just basically dismissed me. I filled out a form for the city manager to take a look at this stuff. I don't know who else, but I've been to several departments. I talked to you?
No, but we need to talk because you're in my precinct.
No, that was another, I want to know who's my precinct.
That'd be me.
Okay, all right.
If you can stick around after the meeting, we can talk.
Okay, all right, and, you know, like, that's where I live. But I bought other properties here in town trying to restore them, and like, the city comes out, they dig a big hole, it's as big as this table is round, and just left it. Left it right there, right at the curb, right at the driveway.
So, you and Mr. French?
Yeah, they threw a tire in it. I came down here multiple times, I'm talking about months, and this last time, they went up and put up a metal plate on, over it, okay? But the metal plate isn't covering it correctly, it's just all stuck in, this kind of stuff. What is going on?
All right, we'll, we'll follow up definitely.
Okay, all right. I don't want to go through their list of things because I only have three minutes. I didn't know about three minutes, but the case was there. All right, that's a lot.
Anybody else would like to stand?
Good afternoon. My name's Mattie Washington. I live in Precinct Three. I live at twelve-eleven South Eaton Street. I also own twelve-oh-nine and twelve-thirteen, all of them butts up to mine, twelve-eleven. Last time I was here as city council, I was talking about the lily pads so much, they called me the lily pad lady. But down by Barnes Park was where it started, and the lily pads are constantly creeping up the river. They're almost right there in my backyard, and I'm at the widest point. When you throw the, when you throw the reef in during Memorial Day, the reef floats down the river and gets caught up in the lily pads. Now, there's no, the ducks have diminished, the fishing is down, there's no boating, I mean, it used to be a recreational area. But then, with those lily pads, I believe also is going to come mosquitoes, and pretty soon, it's going to be swamped because you're actually choking off the river. And so, there, right now, there's no access to the river because the boat launch is covered with lily pads. The docks down by Barnes Park is covered with lily pads, and they're constantly choking out the river. Now, yes, I do pay taxes, yes, I've been in my house for over fifty-some years, and I think that something should be done. Now, I hear, last, I read in the Morning Star last year that the last time that river was dredged was in nineteen-eighty-one. Nothing has happened since then because I've been there since nineteen-eighty-one. But I hear so much about Calhoun County, last I checked, Albion is in Calhoun County too. And they get monies for infrastructure, their Kalamazoo River is not facing what this Kalamazoo River in our section is doing. So, I'm trying to find out what can we do, at least dredge is a river, and get out of the slum, the slime, or whatever is making them lily pads red, to make the river accessible for recreational activities. Thank you. And that's Precinct Three.
We've talked about that many times.
Anybody else like to stand and take the opportunity?
I don't have enough paperwork for everybody, so if you have to share.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Well, I will, down at twelve oh three Second Street.
Thank you.
We can share.
We can share if you'd like. So, we can share if you'd like.
Oh, okay, well, I guess you'll pass that. We, the people of Albion, will not be bullied, threatened, or no-typed. So, let me be clear, how many of the city complaints go in file thirteen? Who gets the white copy, the yellow copy, the pink, the gold? What is being done about Norman Johnson's stolen driveway? Who is the investigating department? What happened at the city auction? I was told by Kevin O'Brien it was being investigated. By what firm? How do Albion put residents, how, how did Albion put residents in a contract with Granger that we did not sign? What did Albion receive in the deal with Granger? Why do we have so much more garbage laying around Albion since we were forced into Granger's service? Since Albion can't keep workers, are they receiving ill treatment? Does Albion have a new hard copy of the resident guidebook to city services? Has it been revised because you didn't talk to we, the people? This council needs to stand fast and accountable for the first, second, third Hartwell project. City manager said there is some repair, a repair list for the project. There was one item. Was there seventy-five thousand dollars left from the project? Can you explain how and why this project was left like this? On August ninth, twenty-twenty-one, nine-thirty a.m., white men in the city of Albion were notified of sidewalks curbed and ADA's. Director Miller refused, refused to comply. I am extremely concerned about no sidewalk or ADA on the corner of Wild and Carson. They tore out their yard up to put pipes in, but would not put a sidewalk in that was ADA compliant a few feet away. The owners are paraplegic. Has any street that has been done recently been left like this? Irwin Ave, North Street, Hannah, Clark? Has not. Why is this acceptable in a low-income area? And I ask that this be put on the next agenda to find out why this street is like this. Because somebody needs to be held accountable because you now have pictures and evidence that you say you never saw or had.
Would anybody else like to stand and address council? All right, done. City manager's report.
Thank you, somebody online.
Councilwoman Lawler, can you hear us?
She's muted.
Councilwoman Lawler, I think you're on mute. Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for my absence today. I'm not feeling well, so I thought I might stay home. But I do want to talk about the lead program. I do have a name and a phone number if it would help anyone. His name is Dan Osborne with the Community Action, and the phone number is two-six-nine four-four-one-one-three-three-one, and he has been doing a couple houses out here in Albion. So, if that may help someone, I just was willing to share that information.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you so much.
City manager's report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. A copy of my report was included in the packet. Just a few things to know, I did already mention, but there will be the public meeting to discuss the dams feasibility study. Part of that study, we have shared the concerns of the lily pads, so they are aware of that. We've contacted Eagle and DNR because they are protected class, so there are certain ways to remove them. So, they are aware that this is an issue for our residents, so that will be tied into this feasibility study as well. But that will be held Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, from four to six p.m. at Victory Park in the Large Pavilion. To encourage everyone to come out. The Albion Pacer rating, I did email all of you, council, at the beginning of last week, we have received the results of the updated study that goes, drives all of the roads here in the community and ranks them on a scale from one to ten. Unfortunately, our rating has declined from a low three to now it is down to two-point-seven. That means majority of our streets are failing. I just, I put that out there as, it will be on the ballot this August second to discuss a potential road millage. And I think the reality of this, if we do not identify a new way to address our streets, that will, the conditions of our roads will continue to get worse. To follow up, we did receive, this will be on the next contingent items, we did receive an overage invoice for the first, second, third Wild and Hartwell street project from MDOT in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. So, that will be coming before council to, for approval because there was an overage for that project. Just to remind everyone, I will be out of the office the remainder of the week at the Michigan Municipal Executive Summer Conference here in Holland, Michigan. During that time, if you need any immediate assistance, Assistant Manager Ridge will be available. And we did announce it this morning, it's on our Facebook page as well as the city's website. So, Cass Street will be closed from Superior to Clinton on Wednesday, July twentieth, starting at seven a.m. There will be a crane on site to repair the HVAC unit on the roof of the building, so it will be closed until they are done with the scope of that work. Residents and staff, they're encouraged to use, utilize the back parking lot here behind City Hall, and they can go the rear entrance to continue to handle any business. I'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions for our city manager? Mayor Portem Jackson?
So, to make it clear, there is a millage on August sixth.
Yes.
For them to vote, for them to vote for, to vote on, basically.
Yes, council, you guys, you approved that language back earlier this spring. We have had four different town hall meetings to speak to our residents on what that, the impact of that millage will be.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do excuse, and you have to do mayor, council, and county.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cummins?
Yes, mayor.
Mayor, okay.
I just want to emphasize, as Haley has just went over, it is imperative that you all get out and vote for the millage. Our roles, we do, oh, let me retract that, I didn't say that. Our roles, we do, oh, let me retract that, I didn't say that. But it would be nice if everyone considered to come out and partake in what is going on for us, for the veterans, and vote for the veterans, and also vote at each precinct about the millage. They are very imperative to our city for you to kind of think about that, and that is a concern that we do have. And once again, I will continue to say that the hall, the wall of healing is very important. So please think about that. We have many veterans here that need those facilities. Aye you.
Any other councilman, Cummins? Motion to excuse Councilwoman Lawler?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:20, 8:30 p.m. Just a reminder.